We could all please stand for the pleasure of the audience.
I have my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah. Go there, Jack.
Yeah.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August first, twenty twenty-two meeting of the zoning Board of Appeals, or ZVA. First, let me introduce the members of the ZVA present here this evening. As regular members, we have Carl Hinger, Alan Donnelly, Janet La Forge, joining us on phone, Lisa Temple, and Nahid Kaisar. Our alternate members present are Larry Rushmeyer and Elijah Hollings. Also present is our land use director, Rochelle. The current agenda can be found under Board Meetings on the town website. I will call each applicant one at a time. When I call the property address, please come forward and tell us about your appeal. After we have gone through all the cases on the agenda tonight, we'll close the public hearing portion of this meeting, and we'll begin deliberations. You must have at least four affirmative votes to have your appeal granted. You're welcome to stay at the end of the meeting or contact the land use office in the morning. Note that in regards to any appeal that is granted, it is constrained to the plan submitted and to any purposes stated in the application, unless the board specifically notes otherwise. The public hearing is only one aspect of the approval process and is for the purpose of accepting factual information and data bearing on the application, and allows expression of opinion by interested parties. The final decision may be in the form of approved as submitted, approved with stipulations, or disapproved. After reading into the record the correspondence received by the board relative to the application, we will ask the applicant to present their application in detail. The chair will then entertain questions of clarification from board members concerning the applicant's presentation. We will then hear from those who wish to speak in favor of the application, followed by those who are opposed. Following each side of the question, the applicant will be allowed to make concluding remarks. All questions and comments must be directed through the chair. As you're recognized, please state your name and address each time before you speak so that your comments may be legally recorded. Please be assured that everyone will be given the opportunity to speak. However, the board is most interested in hearing factual information relative to the application. And in view of the time constraints placed upon us, we ask your indulgence in not reiterating comments previously presented. Okay, so first, we have the review of the minutes from our July meeting. So I guess we'll just do a four-person vote since the three of you were present at the last meeting. Do I take a motion to accept the minutes? Second?
That discussion, I'll second for that discussion.
Okay. Discussion, minute?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Kind of a couple of little things I'd like to get fixed if I could. First thing is, I'd like to make an amendment to amend the amended minutes of six, six, twenty-two. On the second, third line there, it says, Mr. Reford, this is on one twenty-eight Federal Road, Z dash twenty-two dash twenty-seven. Missing reference to Connecticut General Statute Title, it says A is an alpha. Chapter one twenty-four, section eight dash six, it should be eight, as in the number eight, rather than A is an alpha, Mr. Chairman. That's the first part of that. And then the second part of it, at the very end, it says wetland meetings that they stated that were, if there were no wetlands, it's the actual verbiage is, there were no disturbances to wetlands. And I double-checked the video on that, Mr. Chairman, and that is correct.
Okay, and that's another review of June's minutes?
Yeah, so it's amendment to, I'd like to make a motion to amend the amended minutes of the June six, twenty-two meeting. Okay, to change the letter A, as in, it says Title A now, to Title Eight, as in the number eight. And then towards the end, it's the last sentence where it says stated that they were, that there were no wetlands. It should say there were no disturbances to wetlands. And that would be correct, and I did double-check that in the video, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
That's the first motion I'd like to make to amend those minutes. And then there's a little more.
Okay, well, it's all part of the same minutes, if you want to continue.
Okay, sure, sure. The second thing I'd like to get fixed if I could is on the four thirty-eight Candlewood Lake Road, Z dash twenty-two dash thirty-three. At the, at the end of the first sentence, where it says Vice Chairman, it should say Vice Chairman A. Donnelly asked about the FEMA flood zone and the exact location of it, Mr. Rosenfeld pointed it out to me, and we found no issue. That was, that was not in there. He just, it got forgotten, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
The next part, under one forty-four Pocono Road, Z dash twenty-two dash twenty-one. Okay. Let's see, right here, place it in her, one, two, three, third line down. Place it in her septic's reserve. Let's see, oh, I forgot to say that I showed a copy of her septic as built from the town. Oh, that's not in there, and I showed it to her, and she confirmed that that was her septic. That was on one forty-four Pocono Road, Z dash twenty-two dash forty-one. And then also, right after that, it says septic was verified by Ms. Cologne. They didn't say that I showed that. And also, Vice Chairman, I want to ask the applicant about the possibility of adding the pine trees on the Dean roadside of the property, that wasn't in there at all. It was a discussion, I asked her, her position on that. And that is, except, that is the last part too. I don't want to be shooting a pocket, but that's, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so those are the amendments, minutes?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
I also want to know, I think the owners, the property owner for one forty-four Pocono is Miss Colon?
Wasn't Cologne?
Yeah, it looks like. Miss Colon, maybe it's just my document of these.
We have it here.
Minutes.
I thought it was.
I didn't hear, I didn't hear that.
I just think in the minutes, the property owner's name is Miss Colon.
Okay.
I have C.O.L.O.N. with a hyphen. Yeah, that's misspelled, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so.
C.O.L.O. hyphen N. That's how it should be spelled.
Hieroglyphics in there.
Oh, yeah, it looks like it was a garothi.
There should be an accent over the, uh, Cologne.
Well, there's a, there's a.
What I'm just saying.
There's a cute, there's a three in there as well, so I don't think. Okay, so, take a motion to amend the minutes?
I move to amend the minutes. As I just discussed, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, there was a motion on the floor.
Sorry.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, there was a motion on the floor to accept the minutes.
Accept.
And then there was a second to accept the minutes, and then there was discussion, which is now, so you need to retract the former the former motion, make a new motion to accept the change, to accept the minutes with those changes.
Okay.
So I think.
I'll do that if you want.
Mr. Temple, retract the motion.
I retract. I hereby retract my motion to accept the minutes.
I'll second that retraction.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to approve the minutes with the change.
I'll move to change the minutes as amended.
I second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries four to zero. And then go on to the public hearings. Our first public hearing, I believe, was withdrawn, the one twenty-eight Federal Road. They have drawn their application, so we will go directly to four thirty-eight Candlewood Lake Road, Z dash twenty-two dash thirty-three. Now, before we get into that, Richard, who was here last meeting and began hearing the application, couldn't make it tonight. But he had a last-minute thing coming up. Have any of you had a chance to read the minutes, watch the video, and do you feel comfortable like you could vote on this application tonight?
I didn't watch the video, but I did read the minutes.
Okay.
Are we, are we going, we're not going to have any public hearing here?
Uh, well, well. Yeah, so it'll be a continued public hearing in four thirty-eight Candlewood Lake Road, but I want to know if we have.
I do know about the property.
Okay, so you feel comfortable in being able to vote tonight? Okay. Okay, come up.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. My name is Nick Usejack, a registered landscape architect at the CCA, and hearing for the Old Brook Road in Brookfield.
Just a little bit, sir.
Yes, Mr. Ralph Rosen is the applicant. He cannot make it tonight because he is overseas, so I'm filling in for him this evening. If he wants, I can walk through the application again, or I could just go right to what I think the issues might have been at the last meeting.
How do you feel about this?
Oh, we are telling him it would be nice if we could walk through it, since this is our only application here.
Right, okay.
Okay. Basically, this is application C twenty-two, twenty-three.
And. Sorry, can I get through this one? Z dash twenty-two dash twenty-three, or thirty-three, sorry.
I think it's thirty-three.
Thirty-three, yeah.
Thirty-two, right.
Thirty-three. So, Mr. Rosen presented last time, and there's a variance requested for a rear addition to his residence. Now, the rear yard setback is thirty feet. This is the nature of the variance. The proposed structure is going to be eighteen feet from the rear property line. So we're requesting a twelve-foot variance for this property. There might have been some confusion between the letter that went out. When it was filed online, there was a sample notification sent out. The day that all the notifications were sent out, the plan had been revised, the application was revised. Everybody got the correct notice, and it is in fact, as Mr. Rosen stated, it was twelve. For the record, this is the actual notification letter that went out.
I believe Mr. Rosen, he corrected that, that was the ten-foot eight letter from CCA, but he did correct that last time he was here.
Right, and that's a sample of what everybody received. If you'd like it, could walk through the hardships again, or basically, as stated by the applicant, the septic tank and fields are on the north side of the house, as well as the curtain wall and the drain in front of the property. And the area proposed permits the least amount of setback variance. Utilities, electric, gas, are all close to the house in that area. The side adjacent to the garage, which would be on the right-hand side of the site plan as we're looking at it. They all have condensing units for the air conditioning, so there's, there's no room to put anything there. So the rear or east side of the site, which we, you know, the plan is, it's also restricted by the first lightings of the G contour line, so that that rear property line is first light power. So that this is what's left over. These are the hardships that he is presenting. Part of the confusion at the last meeting is Mr. Rosenfeld stated that there was a variance for the pool. That's totally incorrect. He confused it, there's actually an inland wetlands approval back in May thirtieth of twenty nineteen. That included the pool and everything else, so, so he probably called it a variance, but it was not. There was no prior variance for a pool. There was a variance granted on January seventh, twenty twenty-one, and this was Z dash twenty dash one twenty-five. And that was for a shed. Which you're probably familiar with. So really, that summarizes it, and it kind of explains why there might have been some questions at the last meetings.
Okay.
That was really the only outstanding issue, I think, was the pool variance, which it was not.
Yeah, that was, I know my main concern from the last meeting, does anyone have any questions?
No, that addresses it, thank you.
Yeah, very much addresses what I had, and the main hardship is the septic systems, the big fields, and then his, the runoff that he set up for the water, and that's on the north side of the property going back.
Correct, and this addition is going where the pool originally was going, there's no more pool.
And there's no existing variance already there, so.
No.
We're good, thank you, sir.
You're welcome, thank you.
Any other questions?
I do have a question, sir. The, the square footage of the house, do you happen to know what the square footage of the house is, the existing structure?
Not offhand, but we can get back to you on that.
So the need for the all-season room? That is my question, basically.
Well, that would be.
Is the house small, is there, because it seems like a pretty good-sized house.
I would defer that to the applicant.
Okay.
I remember it from last time, if you'd like me to tell you. He stated that at first, they were thinking about putting a pool in there, but then as they got older and stuff like that, and with the grandkids, the four-season room would just be better. I think that's what Mr. Rosenfeld said last time we were here, if I remember correctly.
That sounds good.
Correct, that's correct.
That is correct, okay, thanks, Chairman.
Any other questions? No, all right, hearing none, is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Hearing none, is there any member of the public who wants to speak in opposition to this application? Hearing none, would you like to make any closing remarks?
Oh, no, just thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Take a motion to.
I'll make a motion to close, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to close the evidentiary public portion of the hearing, Mr. Chairman.
The public hearing? The public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Music, music.
Let's take a second?
Second that.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, on to one forty-four Pocono Road, Z dash twenty-two dash forty-one. The applicant has, I believe, requested that we table this until the September hearing, that everyone receives that. Email?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry?
Mr. Chairman, I move to table this, Z dash twenty-two dash forty-one, Camille Cologne, one forty-four Pocono Road, until the next meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, a second?
Second, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now to deliberations of our four thirty-eight Candlewood Lake Road. Took a motion to approve as submitted.
Move for a resumption, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second, discussion on this. Z dash twenty-two dash thirty-three.
The hardship shifts seem evident to me, and the questions we had have been cleared up tonight.
Yeah, I think the main concern from the previous meeting was about the, we didn't know if there was outstanding variance for the pool, but now that, that's been cleared up, I feel comfortable about it on it.
I agree with, I agree with both of you, Mr. Chairman. My questions have been answered, he has a hardship, the septic on the northern part of the property. And I have no problem with bringing variance, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that passes five to zero, and the hardship is the.
Topography and septic.
Wetlands and.
The septic on the northern part of the property.
Okay, so that is the only application we have for tonight.
Thank you, sir, good evening.
So, on to discussion of the bylaws.
I'm ready, is everybody ready? I want to talk through a few pieces.
What's the status with us going to the lawyer, the town lawyer?
Hey Janet, you can chime in on this, I think that.
Yeah.
We're all discussing it, right? Want to make sure everything's in there, it looks correct before it goes to the town attorney through you?
Yes. I completed the final version of the bylaws and requested, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if you emailed it to all the members.
I might have missed that email, I don't.
I will, well, yeah, I think you missed my whole. But I will now, I, I will send the final version over to all the members and the alternates, and I would appreciate all those who want to change or make revisions in it, to email it back to me. And I will make the changes, and then we can discuss it on the September first. And then it will be final that I could send over to the attorney Schellenberg, just to make sure the deciding's are correct, and if she needs any changes. And then that will be it, we will have our new bylaws. And I'd appreciate everyone's revisions on it, if they feel that it could be changed, whether grammatically or spelling, that's all part of it. So, thank you very much.
Okay, so.
So do you want to?
Thank you.
So we want to send it out and have a chance to review it, discuss it at the next meeting, and then send it to the.
Decide to send it, is that what you're thinking, Janet?
Or?
Well, I'm, what I'm thinking is pretty much, I think it's pretty much a final, final, other than, I did get some changes, I made them, and it's been a work in process for many, many months. If anybody has anything to say about it, I would really appreciate you just emailing it back to me with your changes. I mean, I think, and then that could be sent on to the attorney Schellenberg.
Want me to, Janet, want me to discuss that, you know, the tweak we had to do from conflict of interest, title ten in here, number ten? Go over it with some of the other members of the hearing?
Yes, you want, yeah, I mean, but the thing is, Alan, you know, I need to have everything in writing, so you could discuss it, but it would have to be sent to me if you want to change. I mean, I think it, I mean, Alan, I think we worked on this pretty.
No, I think we got it pretty good, but. Oh, wait.
Great, yeah.
Elijah and Larry are here, I don't know if they, you guys have looked at it? Had any input, not really?
Did we get an email at the final?
Chairman, you sent the final copy to all of them.
All right, we better send it out.
Yeah, let's make sure it gets sent out.
All right, I make a motion to table it, if you want, Mr. Chairman, until we, until next meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move to table the, going over the bylaws until the next meeting. As long as everybody gets a copy of it, we get to review it, we'll discuss it there, and then hopefully it's clean, we can send it to the town attorney, and have them look it over.
Okay.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that is it for the meeting, was the, did you have something, any informal discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. All right, this is informal discussion. If everybody remembers back in the very, very first meeting we were on, I think it was December sixth, twenty twenty-one, but I found a couple of different things in five dot one echo in the zoning code, it just didn't make sense, they, they weren't really clear, and we all discussed it, and we made a referral over to zoning, well, they finally got to it, I went to the meeting last week. And everything was pretty good on it, but they suggested a little bit of a tweak on one of them, and I guess they were going to discuss it amongst themselves, but I, since I made the motion, we all okayed it and referred it over to them, I figured I'd make the tweak on it now, and send it back over to them, and they can see if they like it. That's pretty much it, like, you want me to tell you what it is first, and I'll make a motion?
What was the, what was the issue with?
All right, five dot one echo, that was the chart on the TCD, it's page, shouldn't be ninety-three in the book? Let me get to it. It's ninety, ninety-three in our book, ninety-four online, if I remember correctly. And it is under the chart under height, yeah, here it is. Okay, so five dot one echo, it's page ninety-three in our book, ninety-four online, that's echo, or E is land use standards. This was way back in December sixth, is when I found these and sent them over to. But under, there's two things there, the biggest one was height max, and we all discussed it amongst ourselves, so verbiage that was there, it said three stories and AND forty-two feet, which could be, we all discussed it, it could be really taken multiple different ways. Developer could come in, give us a legal problem, and say, hey, I want three stories, thirty-two, thirty feet, plus another forty-two feet, it'd be seventy-two feet, or higher, because a story can be somewhere between ten and fifteen feet. So I at first made a motion to clean that up, they did bring it up at that meeting there, I heard them, and their original intent, which I didn't know back in December sixth, because we're all brand-new, is they only wanted buildings in the TCD to be no higher than three stories, period. But it's just the way they put the verbiage in there, it looks like you can add them together, and all of us figured that out. So, they, what I did at that meeting is I struck the three stories and made it forty-two feet for max, but I didn't know their original intent, which was three stories only. So I'd like to just slightly revise that referral over to them, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, and I think I got it correct now.
Okay, but the, what's the.
Okay, the revision would be under five dot one echo, okay, land, echo is land use standards, under height max. All right, I'd like to move to refer to the zoning commission, section five dot one echo, that's special districts, the TCD, to strike, double-strike, or completely remove the words three stories and AND, leave the word forty-two feet, and in closed parentheses, so parentheses, three stories max, and then a closed parenthesis, if that makes sense. So everybody knows, it's perfectly clear, forty-two feet is the max, and three stories is the max. So I'd like to refer that fix of my first referral over to him, Mr. Chairman, and make that motion.
Okay.
I think I made, I think I made the motion. Want me to restate it, did you get that?
Alan, I have a correction.
Yes.
Of ten feet, story ten feet, is that, is that what you.
Well, that, yeah, that's the, that's the second part of it, which I think is correct. They were discussing that at the zoning meeting as well, but I was going to explain, they're, they're going to discuss it, they make the final decision, we can just refer something to clean it up.
That other one wasn't something that.
Yeah, that other one I don't think is, is a problem.
Okay.
Yeah, I can, if you have to, I can discuss why I thought that that should be changed, but they already have that change in front of them. This was the only one that they weren't, they weren't really sure of.
Okay.
I'll restate it if you want.
I would say that some of their conversation was about the three stories, so the three stories max should probably be the first item, and with a maximum of forty-two feet.
So do something like three stories, and then in parentheses, no higher than forty-two feet.
So higher than forty-two feet max?
Because three stories is the key point, it seems that they're trying to look for.
Three stories and it's forty-two feet over there, the, the height, that's the forty-two feet. But we, we want to make it so that there's, if there's, if there's an and in there, or a developer comes in and sees that and, he says, oh, look, I can go three stories, I can do forty-two feet, I'll do seventy-two feet.
Three stories max?
Right.
Forty-two feet max?
Yeah, what's your suggestion on, on the verbiage on that, please?
As that, I just stated, three stories max, forty-two feet max.
So put, put them both in there.
Correct.
That's the way it is. Okay, I'll restate it, ready? Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to move that we refer to the zoning commission to change five dot one echo to three stories max.
Forty-two feet.
Forty-two feet max, but no, no word and, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Three stories max, forty-two feet max. Pretty understandable.
Okay. All second that motion? All in favor?
I'll second.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so it will be referred to the zoning commission?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn, unless there's any more discussion.
Um, um.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Rochelle?
So I would just thank you, Mr. Chairman, for recognizing me, are we, we're still under informal discussion?
Informal discussion, yeah.
So, I just wanted to let, first of all, apologize to this commission for interjecting last meeting excessively. I, I'm not withdrawing the content of what I said. However, I am apologizing for the manner in which I said it, so I hope you'll forgive me. I am concerned with some of the, some of the procedures, and I know all of you are new, but you know, and it's, you know, it's difficult to, to get all of this stuff going. You've got Robert's Rules of Order, you've got the state regulations, the state statutes, you've got the zoning regulations. Plenty of stuff going on, and I don't expect anyone to be, you know, hitting the ground running, it takes years to learn the stuff. But I would just like to say, and I, I already have told both the chairman and vice chairman, you know, I found the, the Connecticut Practice Series, the Practice Book, which is the place that specifically says that no, no public hearing should be closed before all of the evidence is taken and heard from whoever, whomever the commission name want to hear from. So, I, and I'm happy to send, send the language to anyone who wants to read it. So, it specifically says, first of all, there's two, there was two different issues. One of them was this idea of, you know, keeping the public hearing open until all the information is received, because after the public hearing is closed, no further information can be obtained. And then the second issue was that the commission must state clearly on the record when the public hearing is closed. And that's the language that the statutes use, is the public hearing is now closed, so that there's no mistake.
I understand it, I'm sorry to interrupt.
And so, so these, the, those were some of the statutes that I, the, the Practice Series, this is, you know, the Connecticut Bar Association put this together over time. And it's, you know, the way, the way law is done, yeah, yes.
So, when the board goes into deliberation, there is no contact with the audience, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
None?
None whatsoever.
None, it's closed.
Yes, the deliberate, and then the deliberative, the deliberations, once the commission does take up deliberations, it's, it's among those who are seated. And it's, you know, they're, they're to decide with, according to all the information that's been presented, testimony, you know, verbal testimony, documents that have been submitted. And, and that's really it, you don't have, I mean, if you've forgotten to get, say, you know, a report or a survey or whatever the heck you wanted. Unfortunately, it's, it's just, it's not, it's not going to be part of the record.
See, I, I don't know if I completely agree with you, and I understand exactly what you're saying, but like, if you remember last meeting when we were all here discussing that, Commissioner Briggs brought up to you that there has to be some part in the deliberative process where we hear people in a public hearing, and we all did read what you sent over to us. But it mostly was for zoning commission and stuff like that, and I didn't see a statute that said the ZBA has to do this, that, and the other thing. Because I've read all the statutes and everything on the ZBA, not only in Connecticut, but also in New York State as well. So, I think what you sent over to us, although it's great, it's a training thing, but I think it mostly applies to the, you know, to the zoning commission. And maybe wetlands and stuff like that, I could be wrong on this, and I think the difference here is because we're technically quasi judicial, that maybe, yes, you're right, if we close that public hearing part. But we, there's, there's gotta be a deliberative process where we can seek more evidence if we don't have anything. And I know one of the things we said before was, hey, we can give somebody the ability to withdraw it if we're in our deliberative process and we don't have enough information. And Richard brought up the example of the apple orchard, okay, Canwell Lake Road, on that one, that took three or four different times, I think, coming in front of us before we had a solution, because we didn't have enough evidence on it. But there has to be some kind of a process where we can seek more evidence, even, even if we can, if we have to, and we have to ask them to withdraw it and then resubmit it, if we have to have public hearings on it again. But there's gotta be something, somewhere for us to get more information, if we can't come to a fair and honest decision at the end, and we need information, there has to be a process. Richard explained it much better than I do, you know, if we reviewed a video on it when he was speaking.
I don't disagree that if there's more information that needs to be obtained, but it's not with the public at that point, it's in closed session. So, then we can decide to continue and look in seeking of information, whether it be a site visit or anything that we're requesting. But the conversation with the applicants is done. Now, the process in which the applicant is standing here, you need to take the time and think it through and ask the questions.
And getting back to the, the apple orchard, for example, I know you were on that one, you remember it, but remember, we didn't have anything on the soil, that was their biggest problem there, was the soil, they couldn't have, they couldn't have a well, they couldn't have a septic, they couldn't really do anything.
It didn't perk.
It was a septic, it didn't perk, thank you. But we didn't have any information or data on that, and it took them some time, I think, to get us that, because the town couldn't find anything on it, nobody could find anything on it. And that's why I kept hanging up for three or four meetings, am I close? That's what I kinda remember on it, and we finally approved it.
Okay, so first of all, the, I appreciate what you say, Mr. Rushmeyer, much of it I agree with. It is not the case, though, that even after the, whenever the public hearing is closed, even the commission who's deliberating cannot ask for, for additional information. So, unless it's an opinion from an attorney, for example, the commission's stymied and they, so, the, certain professionals can, you know, can be sought. But it, that's a very limited case, and you know, you'd certainly want to check with the attorney, you know, who could be consulted. There is the, the mechanism, and it was brought up, the, the correct mechanism would be, if you found that there wasn't enough evidence to make your decision, you simply deny the application. The applicant can, can, you know, reapply in six months if they, if they choose.
We could, we could deny it, or they could request to withdraw it.
Yes, they could.
And then resubmit it, and ask with more evidence or whatever, that was one of the things, I mentioned that last time.
They could, they could certain, they could certainly withdraw their application, but, but the, 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 you must remember that the burden is on the applicant to make the best case for themselves, you don't make their case for them. You're like, as, as Mr. Donnelly said, you are a quasi judicial body. So, it's important for you to, to, you know, act in the position of judging an application, of requesting the information during the public hearing. And, and this will come with practice, when you, you know, when you understand, well, what might we need to make our decision? What kinds of questions should we ask in order to have the information filtered to the town, come to the town? It's not, it's, it's not an easy thing, it does come with experience, but I don't care what, what order of mission you're on. There's, there's a, there are statutes that govern public hearings, period, all public hearings, it's called due process of law.
What I like to see is, I like to see the statute and then the part of it that governs the ZBA, because it's not under eight dash six. Where, where the citations on it go.
It's part of the US Constitution, it's due process of law.
I know the US Constitution, yes.
It's due process of law, so, I don't know how to convince you otherwise, I'm trying, my job is to, my job as a, as a paid professional working for this town is to keep you out of trouble. I mean, and to try to help you do your job, I, I know that you're all, they're all there because you want to do your job, I mean, no one wants to be out here on a, on a, on a, on a need, and when they give you home. So, so, you know, but I'm just, I'm not your enemy, I'm actually trying to help you.
Well, we understand that, we understand that, and it's been done, Barry, you've been here a long time, our former chairman was the state attorney general's office and ran it a certain way, and now.
Beyond that, the, the one thing that I will comment, and it's happened, is suggestions from the board back to the applicant as to what those changes should be. And that will bury us, bury us. It cannot, it's not the burden of the board to make something work for someone. It's, there are facilities, CCA, there are plenty of places you can go for expert conduct, and we are not it.
Thank you, Mr. Rushmeyer, I agree with that, in fact, I mean, that's the, the, you remember, the applicant is asking you to vary your rules. And so, you don't help them break your own rules.
They have the burden to prove the hardship and the section of the law, I understand that.
I feel, this is a personal feeling, that my job is to sit here and protect the property of the town and building. And it's not just the applicant that's sitting in front of me, my bare hands goes with that property. So, even though this person's looking me in the eye and saying, no, I just want to put the shed in my front yard, and I, I promise, guess what? If three other people move in and that becomes an apartment, we're screwed.
I think, it's, it's health, life safety, general welfare, and property rights of the public, that's where you're gonna be attacked.
And the value of the real estate. And the neighborhood, it's pretty, it's a pretty burdensome job, to be honest.
I agree, Commissioner.
Rochelle, one thing I wanted to ask you about with the public hearing portion. So, if, if we feel that the applicant can't answer whatever questions we have, they're not sure about something. That would be the time to table the public hearing at that point and say, go get more information, if not, and, okay. And additionally to that, can, in pu, in public hearing, the board discuss with itself? Can, can members of the board?
Well, yes, you can speak to each other.
I mean, so, in that regard.
You won't be deliberating, you might be asking questions, do you think we need to, should we get a soil on the back door?
I guess my question then is, what's the? Yeah, I guess my question then is, what's the difference, then, what is deliberating?
Okay, so the, the difference is.
In that regard, if we're allowed to ask.
Yes, thank you.
Before you answer that, when, when you first brought that up, that's a good place to put in Robert's rule, they have, you can make a motion to basically continue, it's called continue definitely, that's the motion. You can do a continue definitely on the public hearing. That's one that I looked up, that, that's like the perfect spot to use that, I guess.
So, the, typically, the, and, and the term, it was used tonight, table the application, but it's really not, the proper term should be, should be continued, because it's like, it's a, it's a, it's a, in the court of law.
Continue definitely, that's good.
And continue this trial until the next, whatever. So, but, so the difference is, so during the public hearing, not the public hearing portion, but the public hearing, because that's what it is.
Right. Right.
So, I mean, I understand that you're breaking it into two, you know, mentally, I understand that you have a desire to do that, but it's specifically called the public hearing. So, when you hear that, the public hearing, you're gathering information from the public, if anyone chooses to speak or to write the letters and all that. And you're, you've heard testimony from the applicant, the applicant may have, of course, other people, you know, engineers, et cetera, who are also, you know, presenting evidence, presenting testimony, you know, why, why you should allow these rules to be bent. So, you can certainly talk among yourselves and, and, and say to one another, you know, did, did you, you know, should we ask for something, or, or, you know? You can ask, you can each ask the, ask the applicant questions, they should, of course, be, you know, directed through the chairman, but, you know, Mr. Ken, may I ask the, ask the applicant something? Just, just to keep order, because when it's a small thing like this, one person comes for a shed, it's okay. But when you have a hundred and fifty people that are angry in the room, it's a whole different story, so.
There's, I have a question for you, Rochelle, so, last time I knew we were doing a discussion.
Excuse me, Mr. Donnelly, I just wasn't finished after you mentioned the second part of this question, the second portion of this question. So, when, when the commission then goes into deliber, deliberations, then, as Mr. Rushmeyer said, the public presentation patient is, is not allowed at all. And in fact, anyone even groaning, you know, can be asked to leave, you know, there's oftentimes, you know, some rabble rousing, you know. But that's the, that's a closed, now it's a closed session, and no, no public comment. And you can do, and, you know, you can talk among yourselves with, and each one should talk. And if the chairman finds that perhaps enough people aren't talking, because sometimes people hold back, they don't want to really say, gee, I don't think this should, this is, you know, this should be granted at all. Some, you should really try to get everyone's opinions, say, well, you know, what do you think about, what do you think about, so that's when you're trying to find out the general tenor of the group, you know, what are the concerns? What are your issues? So, you're each now raising the various issues that, you know, may, that, that affect your decision, because remember, you must, as you have done tonight, it was, I thought of quite weak, but you must state the hardship, you know? Does, does the, does the hardship warrant, you know, warrant giving a variance? I mean, how is this really going, because, I mean, the, the statutes can, are very, are quite clear, the, the hardship, you know, really has, and this case law, you know?
Harsh should be.
It has to show that, you know, this person's property is almost worthless without this variance. You know, that's what the variance is for, yeah, so, so you really, in order to, and again, some of these so-called smaller cases, you know, where it's somebody putting a shed, you know, it's not, maybe it's not gonna affect a lot of people, maybe somebody, people don't care. But like Mr. Rushmeyer said too, this is in perpetuity, it runs with the land, so, you want to think about that all the time, but, but anyway, so, so you have to really state those, those reasons on the, when you, when you make a motion. And, and they must be recorded, you know, as part of the, the hearing. So, so that's, that's really the key, the key to the whole thing, is, is getting everyone's opinion then on what they think, and why? Why do you think we should grant this, you know, why don't you think we should grant this? That's really what you do in that portion.
I would offer to any board member, I, I do construction for a living. If you have a question about, the topography's too steep for my shed, that's not a hardship. Because you can pour footings and put up solon tubes, there are methods of construction that can happen, so don't hesitate to say, what do you think? I'll explain it to the board in closed session.
So, I have a question for him, if it's okay, Mr. Chairman. So, really, our biggest, the second point I think we had from the last meeting to this one is, when we're in that deliberations, it's us, we're talking, and we have a question, and we need more information. Now, the only place we get, I remember you mentioned last time, hey, I think you can probably get an opinion from the attorney or something like that. But we can also go to the town, right? If there's some paperwork or something that might be missing on it, we can still go to you, we just can't get anything else from the applicant, from, from the applicant.
That's, that's generally correct, in other words, if it's, if it's public record already, like, let's say it's a, it's a, you know, like this, with, you know, a land, on the land use, on, you know, in the land use, in the records. If it's already there, then, you know, it's not new information.
And here's another question, during, during that deliberation phase, and we've had this before too with the former chairman, let's say there was a consensus, and there was no way anybody was gonna come to an agreement on it. Like, the chairman gave the applicant the chance to withdraw it and resubmit with a change, a different proposal or whatever, we can do that at that time as well, right? Is there a problem with that, done that in the past?
To suggest the app, that the applicant withdraw it?
Withdraw it at that point in time.
Previous chairman did, at least for one application, was, I forget what.
Gracebridge Road.
Right, it was Gracebridge Road, I forget if there wasn't enough information, or was it, there was, there was something.
There was information missing and.
Instead of denying the application.
Instead of denying it flat out right there, he gave him, was that right, Jan, is that right, Bob?
The fire chief too.
Oh, right, yeah, well, there is, that's a very slippery slope, I would stay, I would try at all costs to stay away from that kind of thing, because.
Allowing them to withdraw and resubmit, you mean?
Yes, I would, it's a slippery slope, because the fact is that, you know, the application is not, is not sufficient for you to make a decision.
Fair enough, just denying it, and if they come back with another one, and it's different and off.
And you might, and it might raise the, raise the quality of the applica, applications that you get too, in other words, you've set a precedent that, look, we are, we need this information.
Thank you.
But, you know, also, I have to say that I, you know, you know, and it's my, it's my duty to help, also have the, have the office staff, you know, pre, you know, prepare the applicant, make sure that the applicant is prepared with the things that they do need for this meeting, so, you know, not to have, you know, an application that's not complete, as far as, you know, what, what might be requested or needed. So, because, because the staff needs to help the applicant, obviously, these are, you know, our residents, and for, by and large, our residents, and we want to help them.
Staff helps us a lot too, they, you guys work really hard.
So, so, you know, that's, that's, you know, it behooves us to prepare, help them prepare their applications to the best of our ability, but by the same token, you know, it's certainly not, or the, on the, on the other hand, I should say, it's certainly not the job of the commission to assist the applicant in, in their applications. So, you know, it's, it's, all this is very, is very difficult, and, you know, it's very tricky to navigate, because, because, you know, there are many regulations guiding this process, and then there are also, you know, changes that come about. And, and, and everything's not black and white, it's, it's just law, it's not black and white, it's open for interpretation.
That's why there's case law underneath the law.
So, so thank you for your time, I, and again, I apologize to. So, so thank you for your time, I, and again, I apologize to, to, um, to all of you whose feelings I had hurt and, um, you know, for my, uh, for my, you know, for doing this in a public forum, but, uh, but I do encourage you, each one of you, you, any of you has the right, it's perfectly, um, acceptable, to call me and ask me about an application. You can always talk to me as your staff member, uh, if you have any questions, and Alan talks to me and asks me things frequently. Uh, and then Carl from time to time, but every one of you has the right to talk to me, you can't talk to each other, of course, about it, outside of the public hearing, the public forum, anyway. Um, but please, I, I welcome the questions, it's the, it's my favorite thing to do, is to find out answers to questions I don't know, so, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Take a motion to adjourn the meeting? Did Janet have something?
Um, Mr. Chairman, uh, let me just understand, uh, if we could just, uh, get back to the bylaw. Should I, uh, after I emailed all of the members, should we discuss it and then they'll have their changes and then I can make it after? Is that what we were left with, so I kinda understand where we're going?
Yeah, so, uh.
Can we discuss it?
Well, we can't, we'll discuss it at the next meeting, not, um, not.
So we're not sending Janet any suggestions?
Well, I, I think since she's the.
We can discuss them one time.
Uh, I believe since she's the secretary, didn't writing the bylaws, you can send proposed changes to her, yes.
Thought she stated that she can't make changes unless they're in right. Go through.
No, I, I didn't mean that. What, what I meant was, I, I, I don't know what I meant. I mean, I mean bylaws. Um, I think the better way of doing it is I will send a copy of the final version to all members. And I think you can make your corrections and changes and revisions, and we can discuss them at the next meeting.
Okay, I agree.
If that is okay.
Okay.
So everybody, yeah, and they'll have their, you'll have their copy with their changes, everybody will agree to it or not. And then I will make the changes after everyone agrees to it, the final, final version. If that is okay for the members.
Okay, so we'll all receive a copy, review it, uh, decide what we like or don't like, discuss it at the next meeting. And then.
Right.
Submit whatever we agree upon next meeting to the attorney for final verification.
Correct. I will make a final version of it and send it on, um, and see see all the members, and we'll see what she thinks.
Okay.
One final thing, I'm so sorry to do this, uh, Rochelle Hozier, and, um, I don't know if, if, um, you all know if it's been made formal, but, you know, Nina Mack, uh, your, your staff member is leaving, she's retiring, and so I just.
We're sad, we're very sad.
So you didn't know that, I just wanted to, uh, to share that with you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we're, she's, her last day is August twelfth, so, you know, we're.
But I heard you're gonna try to get her back a little bit, part-time maybe. Right? You're the boss, try to get her back part-time.
I'm actually gonna take her job, cause then I don't have to come to night meetings. And I think I'm the most qualified.
Nina's wonderful, she's a huge help.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Oh, yes, and wel- and welcome.
Oh, yes, welcome.
Welcome to our.
Welcome to Bonner Rado, Bonner Rado, our new, our new.
Glad to have you.
Recording secretary, thank you for that too. I, I think this is your first Z B A meeting.
We've worked too tough tonight.
Yeah, it's good.
It's hard to follow all the. Okay.
So, make a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.